Everyone, today is Tuesday, May 24, 2022. Time is 11 o'clock a.m. Special meeting agenda with Parks and Waterways, sponsored by our director, Nick Snyder. Calling this meeting to order, attending commissioners Duncan and Filios. Commissioner Bill Brooks is excused. And we have one in open item, open space and park development bond with a protect, excuse me, potential for an action item, which would be a vote. And Director Snyder, would you please introduce our guests?
Certainly. Excuse me, I'd like to introduce Danielle Quaid with Holly Troxel. She's bond counsel. And Mr. Eric Harringer, I hope I said that right, with Piper Sandler. He's a public finance advisor. So they'll be providing the board with some information today. And all be brief. So whenever you're ready, Commissioner.
Go right ahead.
Very good. Well, I'd like to set the table for those that don't know why we're here, because we've had some conversations. So the board's aware, but for the past several years, the board of county commissioners, Parks and Waterways, and community development noticed a sharp increase in requests from our citizens for the county to acquire land in an effort to protect the Rathron Prairie from overdevelopment or otherwise just ensure that we have open space preserved. It's not a new concept, and I've made similar recommendations to pass boards, as has our community development director. But with our unprecedented growth, coupled with our citizens' growing concern that if we don't act soon, we may lose the opportunity to acquire meaningful open space forever. And these are the reasons we're here this morning, and the reason I recommend the board consider providing an opportunity for the public to decide how they wish to solve this important issue. Let our, let the public decide how they wish to solve this by determining for themselves what they want their community to look like, and if they wish to fund the Save the Prairie Open Space Endeavor by placing a bond on the November ballot. Let a vote by our citizens provide directions how we move forward on this important issue that affects future generations and, of course, our quality of life. And an example, Commissioners, I think if you ask the citizens of Spokane if they regret acquiring and developing Riverfront Park, or ask the residents of the Coeur d'Alene if Tubbs Hill was worth preserving, I think the majority would say that they're really glad they did. And I cannot imagine that future generations will ever question why we acted decisively to preserve this unique natural resource. However, I know that they will question why we never tried. So with that, to assist us in better understanding the bond process and its associated cost, again, I've invited Danielle and Eric to speak today and provide some information. So with your permission, I'll get out of the way and let them get you briefed. Thank you.
I don't need to worry about this.
Yeah, you're good.
Good. Well, good morning, Eric. My name's Eric Harringer. I'm with Piper Sandler as I was introduced. I have some handouts if you'd like to have them.
Sure.
Could you say you want a handout?
Thank you.
Just as a way of introduction, I've been working in the public finance world in Idaho for at least 20 years now. So some of my clients up here in Cooney County, I've worked with all three of the school districts on their bond elections over the past many years. City of Coeur d'Alene, on their, most recently, they did a wastewater bond refinance. I've worked with the city of Post Falls on their projects, and another recent one for the North Cooney Water District. So familiar with the, you know, familiar with the county, familiar with the area. On my next slide, I do have a kind of summary of participants, just to help understand what kind of our role would be on the bond financing. If you look at that box, municipal advisor, that's where I think we could be the most useful to the county, is advising you on putting together a bond plan, whether that's, you know, putting together the amortization schedules and calculating the tax impact. And then if there is a bond that gets passed, how do you go ahead and sell that and execute it and access the, you know, most favorable interest rates that you can get in the market? When you're working on a bond election or a bond issue, you typically have someone like a municipal advisor or an underwriter involved at the front end to help with these processes. You also have bond counsel. Danielle Quaid here is representing Holly Troxel, and that's what they do. They do the legal side of making sure that the bond is validly authorized, so that when you do have a bond to sell, the investors know that it was validly authorized and issued, and it meets all the securities laws of the SEC, MSRB, and that it potentially could be tax exempt. And so there's some special tax law. Point being, it's a specialty field that not all law firms can provide. And Danielle's been doing that up here in the area for, I don't know, over 15 years now. So that's really, and then once you get further along in the process, if you go out with an election and the election passes, and then it's, well, okay, probably you need to either bring in an underwriter or a placement agent to help access the market, access the funds. That's something Piper Sandler can do, but we can't do it if we're your municipal advisor. There's a prohibition between us providing fiduciary advice to you and then actually broken your deal with the market. So hopefully that's clear. You don't really need to bring in those last two items until after the election. The other would be the rating agency. So when you go out and sell bonds, you go to S&amp;P, Moody's, Standard and Boars, and get your bonds rated. But that's getting a little ahead of everything. First thing you have to do is decide if you want to hold an election. So bond levy basics. You know, in Idaho, a bond requires a two-thirds supermajority. That's a constitutional issue. Even if you had funds at the county level that you could use to repay the bond, and you didn't necessarily need to levy additional property tax to do it, the Constitution requires you to get a vote to borrow money, to incur debt that's beyond one year. But with that vote does come the ability to levy a property tax outside of your regular tax levy for the county to specifically repay the bond. In the case of a bond, rather than a levy, bond, you sell the bond upfront, you get the proceeds, and then you spend it on a project, and then you levy the tax to repay. And we'll talk a little bit later about, when you're talking about buying open space, and you might not know how quickly you're going to spend the money, you know, there may be a need to think about multiple bond sales, where, for example, if you get a $50 million authorization, and you don't only know you're going to for sure spend $20 million of it in the next three years, maybe you just do $20 million, and then you hold on to the authorization and don't sell it till later. So it's one of the things we're going to have to talk through relative to a bond for this purpose. Use of funds, you can use bond money for basically any kind of capital project, including acquiring property, building the infrastructure necessary for that property, and then, of course, if there's new buildings or equipment and things like that. So we could run a bunch of different scenarios for you, but what we just started with was running a $50 million bond authorization that goes out with a 20-year repayment term. We assume your bond rating would be at least a double A2, which is, when you're in the double A category, it's one of the highest rating categories you can get. And I think that would be the minimum rating, bond rating you'd get. But basically, a bond rating like that means you can go access the market and get kind of the lowest types of interest rates you could see. We know where the market is right now for interest rates, but we don't know where they're going to be after a November election. Interest rates have come up a lot in the last six months. So right now, we're using current rates plus a half a percent cushion, just because we kind of feel like interest rates have stabilized. And yes, there could be, you know, there could be a movement higher in interest rates over the next six months, but don't think we'll see the kind of increase we saw over the last, the prior three to four months. Anyway, point being, we've got some cushion on the rates when we do these calculations. For your market value, I sent some numbers over to Nick a couple days ago, and then I realized I needed to update it, because your market value isn't just the market value of the county, but we also get to include the market value of the urban renewal agency. Because the way the laws work, when you get a bond vote now, you can levy property taxes on that urban renewal area, and that revenue comes to the county, not to the urban renewal agency. So we have to add in their urban renewal market, Ignite, their market value, well, as well as the ones in Post Falls. So $28.5 billion is your effective tax base. That's based on the September 2021 market value that was used for calculating levy rates. Talk a little bit later. If you run in November, we'd have an opportunity to update that number, because there'll be the September 2022 market values that will get finalized in September, as the name suggests, and that that could get done before the November election timeframe. So we, this is based on what will be an old market value. Election date, assuming November of 2022. Just for purposes of running some analysis, we said the bonds would be sold in September of 2023. Part of the reason for that is, to get on the tax rolls, if you have a November election in 2022, you won't certify that levy until September of '23, and then you won't see revenue from that until December and June. So it's just kind of looking at, you know, timing the bond sale with when you actually start to receive revenue, but, you know, that can get moved up or back as needed. And then just a level amortization structure. So here's, here's kind of the tax impact analysis. $50 million, a 20-year repay, 20-year repayment term, assuming you sell all the bonds at once, with an interest rate of 4.26%. So remember, that has a half a percent cushion, so if you were selling the bonds today, it would be more like 3.75%. Interest cost of $25 million, total cost of $75.5 million. Now, that would be collected over 20 years, so you could divide that by 20, and your average, average annual bond payment is $3,775,000. Divide that into the market value, and you're looking at a tax rate of 13 cents per thousand. That translates into $13.24 for every $100,000 of market value. So, you know, on an incremental increase in terms of the overall levy picture, it's not much. 13 cents per thousand is a pretty minimal rate. We looked at the median home value according to Zillow in the, in the county, and that was $594,000, less the homeowner's exemption of $125,000, looking at a median home value, taxable, of $469,000. And, you know, doing the math, that would be a $62 tax bill for this particular bond proposal. Okay? As I mentioned before, you will be able to increase, you know, look at, or I should say, update, I assume there'll be an increase in your market value, because as you know, your market values are based on the value as of January 1 of the tax year, so that's January 1 of 2022. And I think it's pretty obvious that that number's going to be higher than the number shown here. And you've got, you've had double-digit growth the last four years. I'd expect another year of that, at least. That would put you over about, should put you over $30 billion, and those tax impact numbers would go down. And of course, we're calculating a tax impact based on current market value, so whatever number that is, over time, that number should go down, right? Because market value will increase over the 20 years, unless at some point it could stop, at some point it could go in reverse like it did in 2010, 11, 12. But at least in the short term, I'd expect that tax impact to decline. I mentioned interest rates have gone up, and here you can see a chart for the last 20 years of a, this is General Geo Bond Buyer Index. It's basically tracking, you know, a 20-year bond like yours, and what's happened with interest rates for that type of bond over the last 20-year history. And you can see that big spike at the far right, that basically, since January, we've seen rates shoot up. Now, what's happening is bond investors are anticipating what the Fed is going to do over the next 18 to 18 to 24 months, and the Fed has telegraphed that they're going to raise short-term rates to fight inflation. Well, the market doesn't wait until those rate increases actually happen at the Fed meeting in May, and the Fed meeting in June, and the Fed meeting in September. They anticipate it's going to happen, and you see rates start to go up right away, and that's what's happened. All of that movement has been the anticipation of the Fed fighting inflation. And in a lot of ways, we think that the market has priced in a very aggressive Fed, and if anything, the Fed might have to pull back a little bit on being aggressive because of what's happening with the economy. If what they're doing is dampening economic activity and pointing towards what could be a soft recession, hopefully, I think, you know, their, their goal is a soft landing, which to me is basically saying a soft recession. But if the market starts to think, well, they won't have as much room to be aggressive raising rates, then you could see rates start to come down from this level. Making predictions on where interest rates are going could be a little, a bit of a fool's errand, and I'm not trying to predict that we're going to see lower rates a year from now. What I'm trying to say is, we don't know. We have a cushion of a half a percent. I think that's a reasonable cushion, given what's going on in the market. And I think also from this chart, you can see, even though rates have gone up by a historical standard, we're still in a relatively low rate environment. It's just not as low as it has been over the last two years. So one of the things that, you know, I think has got to be part of the conversation is when we look at getting a, you know, authorization for bond money to buy land, and when you actually access that money. So, and I hate stepping on Danielle, because it's her, you know, as a lawyer, her issue to advise you on, but when you sell tax-exempt bonds, one of the IRS rules is that you have a reasonable expectation that you'll spend 85% of the money within three years. And so if you, you know, get the bond passed, sell the bonds, you put the money in the bank, you're going to have to sign a certificate that says, yeah, we think we're going to spend this money in the next three years. And if you don't have specific land identified with a, you know, purchase and sale agreement or some, you know, some strong sense that you'll be able to actually acquire and spend the money, then we probably need to look at slowing that process down, not selling all the bonds at once, and then, you know, maybe phasing that in over a five- to 10-year period. Well, if you do that, you know, then that bond cost that I just showed you would go down, because you're not going to incur the, you know, the amortization on $50 million right away. So there's, you're going to be, well, how much, and how much do we levy to pay it back? What I've shown you, I think, is the worst-case scenario, because you suggest you sell all the bonds at once, incur all that interest cost at the front end, versus selling it over time and trying to pay it back over that 20-year timeframe with less carrying cost, because you're not incurring the debt as quick. But at some point, you have to tell the voters what you anticipate the bond costing. So we're kind of showing what I think is the worst-case scenario in terms of the cost to the taxpayer, and we could refine that a little bit if we had, you know, a little bit more detail on, you know, when the bonds might get sold. Does that make sense? So I think I've covered what's on this slide. And this is just an example of sources and uses page, and what I wanted to illustrate here is, when we sell bonds, bonds get sold, you know, with what often drives premium. So what that means is sometimes when we sell bonds, investors are willing to pay more than the face amount of the bonds to buy certain couponing, and it's just kind of how bonds get sold in the market. But what we're really trying to do with your project is size a project fund of $50 million. So you see the use of funds. So the bond sale would potentially generate $50.36 million, and then we'd have money to pay the cost of issuance. And that's really what I'm trying to illustrate here, is there's going to be some costs when you sell bonds, of, you know, fees like municipal advisor, bond rating fee, the attorneys, and we've, and then the underwriter. So we factored all that in, in terms of those costs, to net deliver $50 million to the county. So when you think about that interest cost, it incorporates all of this. And those are, those aren't set numbers, they're just estimates of what a typical budget for, for bond issuance costs would be. And then this is just what the amortization schedule could look like. You see that coupon rate of 5%? When I talked about investors paying more to buy bonds, that premium is generated because you have a 5% coupon rate on the bonds, which generate, which investors are willing to pay more to get that income stream. We could put a 4% coupon.
Oh, I see.
Your debt service would go down, but you'd get less in premium, so we just have a higher principal amount. So over here, that annual debt service column would be relatively the same. You see the principal total be higher, the interest total be lower, and that's, that's the bond math that goes on when we, when we structured these bonds. So that's the last page of the slide. One of the things that, well, Danielle, I'll let you do your presentation, and I've done some calculations on what maybe an alternative could look like that isn't a bond. But we'll leave that as a teaser.
Thanks for having me here again. This is going to be pretty similar to the presentation I made to you last May, when we were talking about the courthouse facility. So I won't, I won't belabor it, but, oh, talking about this open space issue, the first thing that came to my mind was, you know, is open space an allowable bond fundable project for counties? Because as we talked about last time, it's a pretty specific list of what can be financed for counties, and the good news is it is. So I'll just give you a little bit of a summary, and stop me if you have questions. You know, which, this is kind of what I'm going to cover, the role of bond counsel, the general obligation bond law, the election timeline, the ballot considerations, and then the potential for this other option, which is the temporary levy override, which is what Eric was mentioning. We talked about this last year, but the role of bond counsel is to be an independent legal expert, and with that, we give this unqualified opinion at the end of the transaction to the purchasers of the bonds, that the bonds are legal, valid, binding, enforceable, and tax exempt. And the reason that we do that is because sometimes municipal entities who decide for whatever reason that they don't want to continue to pay on their debt, try to make arguments that they don't have statutory or constitutional authority to have incurred the debt. And so banks and purchasers got smart to that and decided that they wanted an unqualified opinion that that was, that the bonds were in fact enforceable, so that they can come after us if, for some reason, you decide to make that argument. Not that you would. This is our team. We have a pretty large group that works in this area. I'm the only person in Coeur d'Alene, but I have a lot of backup in Boise, which is nice, a lot of expertise down there in all the different areas of municipal finance law in Idaho specifically. In terms of the services that we provide, the first step is the transaction structure and advice, which is kind of what we're talking about here, what Eric's been going through. We assist with the seeking of approvals. So for the, for a bond election, you would adopt an election resolution and call the election, and included in that would be the actual bond election question and the notice that goes to the county clerk, that would then be, you know, published and included on the November ballot. Eric talked about the tax exempt bond regulations. That could be an issue that we would have to address in this case because of the timing as Eric was describing. Otherwise, I think the tax-exempt compliance would be pretty straightforward. When you're acquiring open space and land for the public, that clearly falls into what can be financed with tax-exempt bonds. We can't put a McDonald's on the site, or a Starbucks, or anything like that, or if we do, it has to be a de minimis use of the space. There's a 10% rule for private use, so there's a little bit of room for that, but not much. But I think that the projects would definitely qualify. In terms of disclosure, we often act as both bond and disclosure counsel on a public financing, so we would draft the disclosure document that's actually circulated to the market and utilized to sell the bonds, and give you an opinion on that, and your compliance with the SEC laws related to that. Then obviously, we provide that legal opinion that you were talking about. And then in terms of policies, it's both policies that assure a favorable rating and policies that assure your ongoing compliance, because with a publicly marketed bond, there is ongoing tax compliance as well as ongoing disclosure requirement, compliance. So having policies in place that ensure that the people that follow you are going to also meet those requirements is pretty important. So here's the statute, and I underline the, the relevant provision in terms of your ability to purchase public open space, land, and/or easements. I don't know if there's any consideration for easements, or if you're just looking at acquiring land, but that does give a little bit of additional flexibility, which is nice. Time is always of the essence when you're looking at an election. November 8th will be here before we know it, and September 9th is when the ballot and ordinance or resolution would have to be adopted and provided to the county clerk. So typically, we like to do that the month before, so that we have, can give adequate notice to the county clerk, although you guys can probably accomplish that. Here's a draft of an election question, and I just used the language from the statute in filling in what the, what the project description is, but just to give you a flavor of what, what would be included therein, we always say you have to know what, and how much, and for how long. So you have to know what you're financing, you have to know how much it's going to cost, and you have to know how long you want to finance the bonds for, how long. So you have up to 30 years to, to pay off the debt. This is disclosure that's required by the code. It's been kind of being added to, I think it started in 2018, and it's kind of been added to and messed with and moved around almost every legislative session. But, so this is some additional information that's provided to the voter that Eric will help us in generating in terms of the estimated current market rate and the total amount repaid in principal and in interest, then that dollars per hundred thousand, as well as any current debt of the county, which I don't believe you have any current general obligation debt. So stopping there, do you have any questions about what the general obligation bond would look like, or what the process would look like? So we also looked at this other option, which was utilized, I don't know if you remember, in Boise. I mean, it's been back to the beginning of my career, probably had to be in the early, like 2000, yeah. So I was going to say, it was right, right when I started practicing. Boise City used this method to acquire open space in the foothills, and they called it the foothills levy. And it's a way that you could do, hold an election for a two-year levy override, so you could go, you know, now you're stuck with 3%, you can go as high as 8% with a majority vote. All that disclosure that I just went through would be required, so you would have to tell everybody what the tax impact is. So you would have to tell everybody what the tax impact is. And obviously, if you accumulate funds over a shorter period of time, your taxing impact is going to be higher. But that's a possibility. You can also go above 8% with the 66 and 2/3 vote. So that's a way that you could accumulate cash more quickly. You wouldn't be obligated to borrow against it to have the levy. And it's definitely a strategy that's worked for City of Boise. It looks like they did it again in 2015. So another, another consideration, and I think Eric has some numbers that he might want to put to that, just to give you an idea of what that would look like. Can I come back up?
Yeah, I don't know if the 25 million would fit within the 8 groups. So there'd be a cap on.
Five, 8%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, even if you, if 25 million a year for two years, which is 50 million, that's going to be 88 cents per thousand, or $88 per hundred thousand. So, you know, you know, obviously, you're going to collect it over two years. It's going to be a lot more than spreading it out over 20. But, you know, simple majority and no interest cost. And then you have full flexibility of, you know, having a pot of money to spend as you need.
And then if we had something like returning U R D money, we could do a revenue bond potentially if we already had the, because we still need authority to borrow, but if we already had the repayment coming back.
Well, under this, are you have the two-year levy or under the bond?
Under the bond.
Yeah.
Issue.
Counties don't really have, you have to have a revenue generating system to have revenue bonds. So I, I can't think of a way that you could do a revenue bond for open space, even if you had the revenue. You could do a lease purchase transaction like we talked about.
Right.
But I don't see, I don't think there's potential for a revenue bond. Because there's, there's real specific exceptions for what types of systems generate revenues that are non-tax revenues.
Right.
That can be pledged with like a lower vote, or in some cases, no vote.
So, so it can't be ongoing taxes that help the revenue bond? Okay.
I don't know if your question, but I think you could use those revenues that are now available because of the expiration of the U R D to help pay the, if you did a G O bond, right? To help pay back the G O bond and lower the tax.
Gotcha.
Levy needed to repay. So you could, you could kind of backdoor that concept after the fact.
Yes, you can definitely use those revenues to repay the bonds. And you could use those revenues to acquire some of the land too, right? And not borrow all the funds altogether. And, and sometimes you can explain that in your information campaign, you know, if like if you have, if you have revenues that you know are going to be coming forward, you can say, we're going to use those. And so we're going to reduce your levy obligation utilizing those revenues. But you still have to have the authority to levy for it to be a general obligation bond. Yeah.
Yep, keep going.
I think that's all I have. I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think we talked last year a little bit about that information campaign and how you're not able to, in your official capacity or utilizing county revenues, advocate in any way for the bond issue. But in your individual capacity in the grocery store as an individual, you, you can, you know, share the reasons why you're supporting the bond.
And then I think there's potentially a, an exempt nonprofit who may want to take on the education portion of it and the advocacy actually, except they're nonprofit and it's not related to the county, then they could advocate for it.
As long as they're not using county resources in any way, they absolutely can run an independent advocacy campaign. And you can provide information to taxpayers. It just has to be, if, you know, fair and balanced.
Sure.
So if you care to put yourselves out there, what, which approach would you recommend for us?
I think it kind of depends on what the timing of your strategy is, right? And what you think the tolerance for the tax base is for that increase in levy. I mean, it's a, that would be, it'd be a pretty dramatic increase on, Eric's better at the math than I am, but you know, if you're going 88 cents a thousand, that's going to be a pretty whopping number for people. So if you really think you need 50 million, I think that that would be a tough sell. You only have to get a majority though, which is, you know, significantly easier to get than a 66 and 2/3. So, I mean, it's a hard call.
Well, and I guess we could go, we could go lower. We could go 20 million for the levy, and then that makes it more palatable. Then in two years, we can say, hey, it worked out great for two years. Do you, you know, do you want more open land? And really, I mean, it's beneficial for the taxpayer to decide on that instead of just taking, okay, 50 million, now you're kind of stuck with potentially getting that much land. Maybe they only wanted, maybe we could secure $20 million worth, and then they're satisfied and said, hey, we're, we're good. You got a great piece, and, and we don't want anymore, so.
Absolutely. You could phase it like that.
You know, and bear in mind that the sheriff might decide to go for a permanent levy override. So we could be looking at another 10 or 12 million bucks that he's looking at.
So we may end up putting this off until May, if that levy's going to be on the ballot, because I, I don't see two levies passing.
I'm just going to hit it with, yeah.
Yeah. I don't see that, so.
You know, with the G O, with the bond, it is the 2/3, right? That's the big trade-off. Civil majority, 2/3, lower tax impact versus a higher tax impact. But with the bond levy, you know, you're getting the authorization and it's good for, it's good until you use it. So I mean, you could, you could get that authorization in November and then not sell the bonds for five years. You know, it never, it never expires. So it is giving you that certainty that, you know, it's going to be there when you need it.
Sure.
Versus, I was thinking the same thing. Maybe you keep this, the dollar amount lower, do two years with a plan to renew it, but then you lose the certainty. So it's, you know, one way, there's going to be trade-offs either way.
Yep, it's life.
Yeah.
So what do you need from us today? Direction, what would you like?
Well, Commissioner, I think that we've discussed this sort of ad nauseam over the past many months. And I think it's time now that the board gives some direction on how we should proceed, particularly for David and I. We've discussed nonprofits and recreation districts. And I think the most efficient way to get this answered for the public is by either one of those suggestions. So what we're looking for today is direction on how the board would like us to proceed in terms of either getting a bond in place or another venue to, to solve this on behalf of the public.
Well, and I think to get the bond in place is fairly inexpensive. I mean, to get the ballot language on there. So I think that's a good way to go. Now, would you be involved in the levy if, if we decided to do a temporary levy? You could help with that question too.
Sure, we could, yes, we could do that drafting for school districts all the time, like if they're supplemental and like facilities, just to make sure they're meeting all their requirements. I could work with that.
Sure. So I guess it's just a matter of, in my mind, figuring out, is levy right now best? Is bond best? And until the sheriff decides, I don't know that we can actually.
Let me ask this question, foolish as it may seem. Can we bundle it? If we go out for, say, 30, 40 or 50 million bucks, we have open space and then we have the sheriff's needs. Can it be a single bond?
It would have to be two questions.
Yep.
It would have to be two, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Because the voters have to be able to express their intent.
Yep, 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 yep. That's a good point. Oh, wow, that was easy.
I did have a question for counsel. And that is, if the county is, obtains property through either one of these venues, is it then locked in perpetuity that it can't be converted otherwise, sold for a different use?
It would have to be used for public purposes during the life of the bond.
So what do you mean, public purposes? Could it be turned into a jail? The property? Could it be otherwise used for an administrative building?
Yeah. It could be used for government purposes.
Is there a way to memorialize in the bond that it shall only be used for recreational purposes in open space since that's the original intent?
I think that you would probably do that in a deed if you wanted to.
Yeah, that would be my answer too.
Very good.
In the deed?
Yeah, you could restrict the utilization of property.
Oh, okay, that's right, deed restrictions.
And not my use in perpetuity or open space use if you want to make it that limited.
Some sort of park and recreation type open space. Very good, that's.
So Nick, what's your recommendation? What are you thinking?
Well, Commissioners, I've, I've been with you since 2006. And this is the most asked and unanswered question, at least in parks and recreation for the county. And I know in David's world as well, even in Kiki's world, Councilman Miller's, I mean, this is something that is growing and growing. And the committee's becoming more concerned. Every time you drive across the prairie, a new housing development goes up. And there is concern that if we don't act now, there may not be another opportunity to preserve some space on the prairie. So I think, I think it's time to put it in the hands of the voters and let them decide what they want their community to look like and how it is the county moves forward. I think it's a big ask to just cut a check for a piece of property without public input, even if we had the funds. So my recommendation is to let the citizens of Cooten County decide how we should move forward to solve this issue.
Well, the one property you're looking at, forgetting any negotiation, is over $20 million, correct?
Well, there's, that property is for sale. Keep in mind, that is waterfront.
I understand.
And it's not the largest request by our citizens. What I am hearing is preservation of open space on the raft and prairie. It's not that that other parcel is an important property and should be looked at. But what I'm hearing, again, at least in my small world, is prairie, prairie, prairie. So that's, I'm responding to, to those citizens that have contacted me over the years and growing. There's some Facebook groups now that have assembled. And again, it's about the prairie. Again, that other parcel is intriguing, but it's also very expensive.
But it'll also wreak havoc on the waterways if it sells.
It could. It certainly could be another gem like Tutzil.
That's developed?
I agree, Commissioner. And at 50 million, and it's why I asked Eric, I said, just set the pie in the sky number. I didn't suggest that we'd go there. But what does that look like? And what does that, what would that cost our, our taxpayers?
So I guess the question is, what is the minimum that we should be going for?
Commissioner, I don't think I would put less than 25 million out to the public. I do think that the, the ask on a, on a two-year levy should be considered, what's palpable for, for our community. But if it were a bond, I, I wouldn't, I don't see going for less than 25 million would be worth the effort. That's what we're going to need to acquire something worthy of Cooten County and have enough funding to develop it commensurate with the public's expectations. And going back and asking twice, I would like to avoid, certainly within micro.
David?
Commissioners, David Callahan, Community Development Director. This is a legacy project. It comes once in a lifetime. It requires bold action. I would go for 50 million.
Really?
Yes, sir. I have no doubt that 10, 20 years from now, people will look back and say, you acted appropriately and with all due consideration, and it was the right thing to do.
Which program?
This G O bond.
General Revenue?
Yes, sir.
2/3 vote.
It's easy, yes. But they've been done since I was a child. They've done all over the country and successfully. We know the track record of these things. And that sort of certainty gives us a pool of money to do things with that a county this size needs.
Kiki, would you like to weigh in?
I'm a Coeur d'Alene city council member, and I've been managing the regional housing and growth issues partnership for the last 17 months. And thank you for asking me. I am very close to this, and I concur with David Callahan. I believe that by selling yourself short on the direction to go, the opportunities will be lost and the public will know it later. Regarding this, this large parcel that's a waterfront legacy opportunity, the impacts of not being able to acquire it will be probably more disappointing to the, to the taxpayers than trying to go for it, because there isn't any more like that. I, I think that the open space on the prairie preservation request has been very ongoing. It's been very vocal. People have talked about that, and they want to do that. But unless you have the ability to let them know these other opportunities exist, like the waterfront piece or others that may come into play, you won't know what their current temperature is, what their current, this is a year and a half ago that we polled them and got the information about, this is what we want is preservation on the open, on the prairie. I think that still exists, but I think if other opportunities come before them, that they would be amenable to them. And I don't think you want to sell yourself short on the ask at this time.
Okay, thank you.
So I just have a question. Is the city of Coeur d'Alene working on any projects to, to acquire open space?
The city of Coeur d'Alene doesn't have a huge amount of opportunities for open space. They've been following the lead of what the partnership is doing, so I can't, I can't answer for anything that's really happening in that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kiki. Treasurer Matheson, Steve, would you care to comment? Okay.
I guess my, my concern is, do we want to go big and go home? Or do we want to go little and have at least something? So that's what I'll be considering. I'm fine with going ahead with putting something on either way, whether it's November or next May. But I'm just not there yet if I can jump on board for 50 million, because we don't know what's coming recession-wise and all that. And bigger than preserve open space, I hear is my taxes are too high. So I want to make sure we balance that and, and have the right advocacy program in place if we're going to put ourselves out there for that big of an ask.
If people are concerned with tax.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you push your little button there? Yeah, you can just leave it right there. Yep, perfect.
If people are concerned with tax increase, the, the G O bond might be the way to go just because it's, it's a lower tax impact on an annual basis.
Right.
I think that if, if there's a lot of concern about that, an increase of, you know, 88 cents per thousand is going to be a hard hill to climb, even for two years.
Right. No, I, I don't disagree. My only other concern is it's 50% tax rate. I mean, it's like you, you bought something for 50 million and you paid 25 million in interest. That's pretty painful.
It's a hard sell.
Yeah. So very, I mean, definitely worth pursuing and, and getting in front of the voters. I'm just not sure exactly what form it'll look like at this point.
Yeah, I agree. We have to get it in front of the voters. I prefer November to May. I can't hang my hat on what the sheriff will do, and that's a whole nother matter. I don't necessarily have a problem going with the full 50, only because if it fails, we can always go back, but I assume, I don't understand all the legalities, go back in May and go for a lesser amount. But the thing is, if we go for the full 50, we're putting it out for a test. It'd be tough.
There's new legislation that prevents you from going back for 11 months.
Okay, so it'd be the following year.
So it'd be the following November. But yes, you could always do it again. And I think you could do the two-year levy in May if the bond failed.
Ah, there you go.
I would also say that I don't know that it's a death knell to have the, the sheriff going at the same time.
Okay.
Because people are going to support those projects differently, which is the reason why you can't put it into one election question.
Yes, yes.
Right? People are going to have a lot different feelings about open space that they can use versus a permanent override for the sheriff. You know, I mean, there are going to be people that support both of those in, for different reasons.
They're called millionaires, just saying.
But I, I mean, I don't know. We have seen multiple questions be successful. Boise has done that, city of Boise has done that. You know, they've asked for parks, and they've asked for police, and, you know, layered them on top of each other, and they've been successful. So I don't have a huge concern with that. But, so I don't know if that's worth delaying till next May or not, especially depending on what your opportunities are. I mean, I would look more at that. Like if you have the opportunity to acquire some property right now and waiting till, you know, to issue the bonds till next September might prohibit that. Another thing I would mention is that you can adopt a reimbursement resolution. I think we talked about that last year too, whereby you're able to, if you wanted to come out of pocket to acquire some property, you could reimburse yourself with a bond later. So that might be something to consider if, if there is a real opportunity on the table right now.
Yeah. Well, I kind of, then I would more favor the general obligation in November, knowing we can come back for a temporary override in May. And then that will also show us, did, number one, is the sheriff going to go forward? Number two, did the sheriff get approved for a permanent?
There you go.
So I, I think that's probably a better way to go.
So if we could construct a motion to that effect?
Well, I think, probably need some stuff to come back before a business meeting. Well, I think, probably need some stuff to come back before a business meeting. To me, this is an okay to go ahead and start in the direction of developing language for a $50 million bond on the November election.
General Revenue?
Yeah.
General Obligation.
No, no, General Obligation.
General Obligation, forgive me.
Yeah. Yeah.
It kind, I mean, I understand. It kind of means the same thing, but in the code, it doesn't.
It doesn't, yeah.
Correct. Yeah.
General?
Yeah.
Everybody okay?
Mr. Chairman, whoever's running the presentation, is it possible to get it back to the presentation I have?
Yeah, go ahead.
And go, please, to page four. The next one. There we go. So, and this is to talk about interest cost a little bit. We could go up to 30 years, and one of the reasons we didn't show that option is because if we go 30 years, you're talking about a lot more interest cost. And yes, we could get the tax rate down a little bit by, you know, like, you know, 15-year mortgage is going to be less than a 30-year mortgage in terms of interest cost, but the payment's going to be a lot higher. But in this case, you know, that 13 cents per thousand's a relatively low number, and, you know, okay, we could get that down 8 cents or 9 cents, but what would stick out is that interest cost would go up substantially. So, you know, we can run some different scenarios if you wanted to do a 15-year bond, you know, to try to, so this is kind of a base case starting point, if you will.
But then.
I don't, I don't want to complicate matters. I just wanted to clarify.
But we don't have to decide that today, so.
Yeah.
So what are we looking at for summary?
So for summary, we will consider at a business meeting to lock in the terms, if it's going to be 50 million on the November election for a general obligation bond for open space. So I think that's good.
Without any additional specifics at this point?
Right, and then I might bend Treasurer Matheson's ear for maybe some internal stuff if he thinks maybe 15 years would be better. Yeah, it puts up the amount, but then we're going to pay less interest. So I'll have that conversation and see if he'll willing to weigh in off the record and go from there, but.
Well, and Eric can provide scenarios for you, too.
Sure.
Like multiple, so you could look at what the, what the impact is on the tax, you know, the tax impact, as well as that interest cost impact for different timelines.
Sure.
Go ahead, Nick.
Commissioners, as part of your direction, it would be helpful if you would also advise whether or not David Callahan and I can work directly with Holly Troxel and Piper Sandler to incur some, some cost, bring those numbers to bear. You know, they're gracious to spend their time with us today, but at some point, so they're going to need to bill the county for their services.
I'm okay with that.
So that will hopefully be part of your direction.
Yeah, if, but it should come back in the form of a letter on the business meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
For clarity, that's exactly what we'll do.
Yes, thank you.
Pat, we don't need a motion today, do we?
No, I think direction is sufficient. It was an action item, so, you know, any action is, you know, is appropriate, and so I think just direct consensus, consensus direction to move forward with this at this point is sufficient. Like Nick and I were saying, we'll eventually need to retain both of these firms to.
Absolutely.
Provide that information, but I think that was, he just made that part of direction, so I think that's sufficient at this point.
Okay.
All right.
Are we okay then?
I think so.
We have direction coming forward to a business meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Any people on? Public comment, please. Any public comment?
Anybody on the phone line? Okay.
Hearing none. I have 11:53, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.